By my computer. My name is David Prosser and I'm Chair of the Jefferson County Planning Board. I will have to rely on professional people at the Planning Board there to tell me whether I've got a quorum and things of that nature because according to my screen, I can't tell who everybody is, just phone numbers. Anyway, I will open the regularly scheduled meeting of the Jefferson County Planning Board for June. I'll open that meeting. Andy Nevin, do I have a quorum? Are there six members of the Planning Board?
Yeah, yes, we have more than that, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, the meeting is open. Our first order of business is acceptance of the minutes of the May meeting. You've received copies of those minutes. Are there any questions, comments, objections? If not, I'll make a motion that they be accepted. Is there a second?
I'll second Dave.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are accepted. Excuse me? Mr. Borsy and Andy will kind of tell you the game plan, how we want to conduct this meeting. Mike will offer legal basis for us to have a meeting via Zoom and kind of tell you the batting order. All right, where's my agenda? Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board on any matters other than the agenda items, the projects for today? Okay. Okay. Mike and Andy, please tell us the batting order and rules concerning whether you can speak and keep your microphone on and those type of things. Andy?
I just wanted to start because we did have a lot of correspondence. So just before we start the meeting, we did get a number of letters, emails, postcard. You know, quite a few members of the community opposing one of the projects from the neighborhood. I didn't know if you wanted a summary of those. We did send most of them out to our board members. We got a few late today, so they haven't been seen by the board. But the, I have the issues summarized if you want to hear those. So we could do that during the review of that project.
Well, I thought they were all in relation to the one project there that I didn't address them specifically. But when we get to that project, you can summarize them, Andy and
Okay.
For those type of people.
All right.
Okay. So. Mike?
Okay, yep, I guess I'll talk now. I'm Michael Borsy, I'm the Director of the Jefferson County Planning Department. And because we have a large number of people attending virtually this County Planning Board meeting, I just wanted everyone to have an understanding of the County Planning Board and our process in general and specifically when we review projects. But the County Planning Board is authorized through general municipal law to review certain projects in municipalities. In the case today, the one with the number of people attending this meeting, it's a site plan review. And that is one of the criteria for sending a project to the County Planning Board is if it's a, if a local board is reviewing a site plan. And the parcel of land that the project is located on is within 500 feet of a municipal boundary, which in this case happens to be the international boundary, which is also the Town of Alexandria boundary. So that is why we are reviewing the one Town of Alexandria project today. Now, the County Planning Board only makes a recommendation back to the local board. You know, you could hear approval, approval of modifications, disapproval, or it's a project of local concern only. But all those are, is a recommendation to the local board to approve, approve of modifications, disapprove, or it's deemed a project of local concern. So the final decision on projects that we review is held with the local municipality being a home rule state. The actual process during the County Planning Board meeting is that our staff will, through a PowerPoint, present the project, will, you know, go through a description of the project. It's going to, we're going to show aerial photos of it, photos from the water. There'll be site plans, other plans provided. And then our staff person, Andy, will go through a description of the project. He will go through issues that staff has identified while reviewing the project. We will then ask our board members if they have any questions or comments on the project. Once we get through that, we will ask the project engineer if he has any information that maybe staff missed while we're presenting the project. After that, we have had a request from Attorney Bob Sly, who is representing a group of people about this project. He requested to speak, so we're going to give him an opportunity to speak on the project. And what I would like to ask everyone else, if you would like to comment on this project, if you could type your name in the chat box, and what project you want to comment on, because we do have some other projects. When we get to the point of the public comment period for a project, we will call on the people that are listed in the chat box. We are asking that people keep their comments to five minutes. There is a potential for a lot of people that'd like to comment, so, you know, we'd like to get through, through in a orderly manner on this. People are going to be, start out muted. And that's because we've had issues with background noise interfering with our board members being able to hear the staff presentation. And you can unmute yourself when it, when we call on you to comment on a project. I would also ask that everyone, please put your name in the chat box so we have a record of who is on the call or, you know, attending the meeting. Because some people are only listed by telephone number and so we're not sure, you know, who that is. And we'd like to have an accurate record of who is in attendance at our meetings. And because we're anticipating that the Sport Island project will be a long, longer review, we only have a small agenda, so we are going to actually go through the other projects first, which shouldn't take long at all. So then, any representative of those projects will not have to stay on the, on the meeting for the whole time. So. In summary, we're going to go through our other projects first. Then we're going to do the Sport Island project at the end. If you'd like to talk, please put your name in the chat box. And I'll tell you that I am not a tech wizard and I'm not an expert in Google Meet, but I'm looking at my chat box and I don't see any, any names at all in the chat box. I don't know if I'm just missing something or if no one's going to want to talk, other than Mr. Sly, but we all know he loves to talk anyways. So I'll, I'm going to turn this over to Andy Nevin, who's going to attempt to do a thorough review. Wow, sorry, I'm not going to turn it over to Andy. He's doing the Sport Island project. I'm going to turn it over to either Andy or Sarah to start the other projects. So you guys can take it away.
Who's up for the Town of Alexandria?
That would be me. And Andy Nevin, Senior Planner, Jefferson County Planning. So I'm just going to grab the presentation now. I would want to add though, when you're, when you are going to speak and you unmute yourself, you have to turn the volume off on your computer. Otherwise, the computer and the phone interact and you get a lot of echoes. That's what we were hearing earlier. So you make sure and mute your computer if you're speaking through the phone. That's the only thing I would want to say. So our first project is proposed by Mike, or Chris Finney, and it's in the Town of Alexandria. It is for Finn's A Bay Redemption Center. Can everyone see the town image here? Okay, I'm going to take that as a yes. So he's proposing a bottle and redemption, bottle and can redemption center to include water and soft drink sales. And it may also include boat and vehicle storage and display. And it is posed on Route 12, just before you get to the Village of Alexandria Bay. So here's Route 12 and Route 26. So here's where the bottle redemption center is going to be. And you can see that there are three properties here. But as you zoom in, you can see that there's an existing building here and then these are boats and on display when it was a boat store, a boat shop. Like they did repair and sales and storage. So that this was, that was a historical use of it. And you can see, I think, Otter Street behind the property, but this is Route 12. Okay. And I did a site visit the other day and this is the property now, last week. So you've got the building and then they're just kind of starting the process there for bottled collection. So here's, here's the site and you can see one access here. But there are a few of them, like here's, here's another access on the 12. And yeah, so the rest of the site, let me go back to the aerial. The rest of the site, he, I think Mr. Finney is intending to either use as boat storage and display or he was, he was describing some other uses that he may, he may want to do, but that wasn't firmed up yet. So at this point, it's a bottle and can redemption center and possible boat storage. Now, we did get a site plan, but it was basically the aerial photo with a marker that kind of covered up some of this. So I'm going to just use this aerial here. So the comments we identified deal with New York State Department of Transportation highway work permit. They'll need to be contacted and permission granted if the driveways will be altered and potentially for the change in use. Normally, we speak to them, I didn't get a call back, so I wasn't able to get in touch with them. Local comment deals with the local board should request a site plan demonstrating the proposed uses parking spaces and resulting interior traffic circulation. And the drawing should indicate the boat storage and display areas and not any other uses intended to be conducted on the premises to ensure adequate parking and safe traffic circulation will be provided for all proposed uses. And then lastly, if approved, the local boards should state specifically what uses are approved and their location in order to ensure they can be accommodated safely on site to include parking spaces for employees and customers as required by the zoning law. Any questions?
The board have any questions or comments? If not, staff has made recommendation that this is a project of local concern only and to be returned to the locality with the above comments. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Right here, Dave.
Oh, Cliff, okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, was that the last comment? Okay. That motion was carried then. Are you keeping records of this, Andy, there so that we know who's made the motions and seconds?
Yeah, yeah, we try, yeah.
Okay.
I forgot, we do record the meeting as well.
Okay.
That's part of the state law requirement for conducting virtual meetings, so it is being recorded.
All right, that'll make my job a little easier. Okay. Who's doing the Town of Champion?
That would be Sarah.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, can you see my location map for the Town of Champion?
Not yet.
No.
Not yet, no.
That's weird.
Got a lot of people's faces, but no map yet, Sarah.
Well, I have it on, so let me start over again. All right. Oh, you know why, Andy, you probably didn't stop presenting.
I did stop presenting.
Okay. Maybe I jumped in too early.
There we go, Sarah.
Okay, that's it. We got Town of Champion in front of us. Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that.
You didn't want to swap your screen. We just lost it, man.
You lost the location map?
Yep.
Now it's the wrong way. What do you guys see now? Sorry.
Nothing.
No maps or anything, and just, again, just the people that are taking part in the discussion here.
Started there.
Who's going to do the Town of Clayton, the next one? Maybe we can go to that and get back with you, Sarah, in a minute.
Oh, we're sort of trying to get mine up right now.
Okay, there it is.
There we go, it's back.
That's weird that it's back.
Okay, don't touch anything.
Now what do you see?
Small aerial photo and the town map.
So they're seeing this.
Just go ahead.
All right, I'm just going to, I'm going to go, because if I hit the next slide, for some reason it deletes, so, sorry about that. So, this is site plan review. To expand a vet clinic, veterinarian clinic located in the Town of Champion. It is the countryside veterinarian clinic. It is located at 21995 Cole Road, which is right near the intersection of Cole Road and Route 26. I'm trying to get my pointer in here, which is right there.
Sorry to say this, but we just lost you again.
Oh my God, so you can't see anything?
No.
Andy?
Okay, I'll come back.
I think as soon as I what do you I don't know why it's doing that.
We can see that you're talking because your little S is flashing back and forth, but there are no other visual aids.
Here and put this over there. Yeah.
Never done it that way before.
Sarah, are you in the office or you home?
No, I'm in the office.
Okay, well, help her out, Andy.
He's here with me.
Yep, all right, so you got to present. Don't click anything.
Okay, now we have, we have the aerial photo of the plot plan there.
Hold on a second, because it's backwards for me now.
Yeah, but this is where you want to look.
Okay.
You're fine.
So now we
Don't look here.
I know. I want to go back one slide. Okay, now do you see the aerial photo with Route 26?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I think I know what my technical issue was, but I won't get into that now. Okay. Do you want me to try to get that pointer? Okay, so here we are, Route 26, this side road is called Cole Road. This is Partridge High School. And this is the Meadow, Meadowbrook Terrace Senior Living Complex. This is a church. And over here, you have J and B Ice Cream. So this is the countryside veterinarian. And they're looking to expand. The site is zoned business, which allows animal hospitals with site plan review. This is just a close-up of the existing situation. Right now, they have one driveway access on the Cole Road. They've got parking in the front and parking along the side. They also have an enclosed fenced-in area towards the rear. This is a photo from Cole Road. Shows the front of the building, you can see where the parking just ends here in the front. Another photo from Cole Road, again shows the front. It shows the side over here with a lot of parking on that side. And then this is looking towards Route 26, that's the ice cream shop in the background, again on Cole Road. Here on the site plan, this is the existing access on the Cole Road. And note that in the future, there'll be a second access on the Cole Road. These dash lines right here, so everything beyond these dash lines represents either new asphalt and new parking or a configuration of existing parking and asphalt. So right now, you come in, there will be the addition of all this parking along the front. And then going back up here, there's this whole parking, parking section over here. The existing building is depicted in orange and the existing fenced-in area back here is also in orange. The proposed additions are in pink and they're on the side and a little bit in the front. It kind of just squares off the building. And then again, on this side, also, there's some S concrete back over here. I don't know whether or not this is fenced in or not. And then in the back of this addition, there's a large fence enclosure back here. There's also proposed trash enclosure right here. And there's going to be entrances or exits, you know, towards this new addition and an entrance and exit off the parking lot to this addition. I'm not exactly sure what's going on in either of these additions, because there was no floor plan submitted. The, I think the total, total square footage of this is approximately 4,300 square feet of addition. They have 53 parking spaces, which meets code. And other than that, for state comments, we stated a building permit is required. An ag data statement is required as the property is located within 500 feet of a farm operation located within a New York State Certified Ag District. And for local comments, if the proposed enclosed areas located towards the west and south sides of the site are to be used by dogs, there may be noise impacts to the residential project located next door. The local boards should consider requiring landscaping along the perimeter to act as a buffer. And if there's proposed lighting, it should meet the criteria identified in the zoning law. So any questions on that one?
Any of the members, planning board members, questions, comments? If not, staff has made recommendation that this is a project of local concern only with our comments to be returned to the applicant. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second, Lisa.
Okay, Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That'll go back to the local agency there. All right. Who's doing Town of Clayton?
That would be me. Just a moment. Okay, so this is the Village of Clayton. Clayton Dollar General or Clayton DG LLC is proposing a Dollar General store, which we, we've seen before, the request for the signage variances. That was, they were denied. And then we also saw a minimum lot frontage size referral that was tabled. And then this is for the minimum lot size for the Dollar General. And as, as we saw a few months ago, this project is located on, it's on, what's the name of that street? Grave Street, which is here. And the access will be from Grave Street. And then we're seeing it because it's along Route 12. The property is along State Street in Clayton. And so this is the site, I think I took this a few months ago. And this is generally where the entrance will, will come off of Grave Street. And there's a hill, they'll be kind of carving out this hill, but this is the site. And then to the left here is the bank, I forgot to mention. So Community Bank is here. And you can see a number of homes along Grave Street. But this is zoned industrial, so it is allowed. Then this is a shot from Graves, sort of back here across the site where, and you see the bank next door. Then this is from Route 12 where that small strip of their land abuts Route 12. But this will only have a sign on it, as we saw previously. So this is the site plan they submitted before. The site, the parcel is just under the required lot size by a few hundred feet. And recently, they discovered that the Village zoning law does have a section on non-conforming lots of record. So that's, that's our second comment is, they should determine whether that clause in their zoning law applies to this property. And then the other sort of a typical comment is that in reviewing the area variance, the local boards should consider the benefit the applicant has weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the community using the five factors for an area variance stated in New York State Village Law. So that's, that's what we had on that one.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so this is a local concern only, right, Andy?
Yeah.
All right, the staff has made a recommendation that this is a project of local concern only. And with our comments to be returned to the applicant. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Charlene.
Who was that?
Charlene.
Charlene, thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That goes back to the, to Clayton. Okay. Who's up for Watertown City area variance?
That would be Sarah.
Sorry, I was muted. Okay, let's see, what can you see now?
Local city map and an aerial photo.
All right, let's see, what about now?
Just the town or the city of Watertown map.
All right, let's try that. Okay, this is an area variance for Taco Bell, which you probably all know where that's located. But anyways, it's near the corner of South Belloave and Arsenal Street, which is technically Route 3, say Route 3 in this area. Here's Arsenal, there's Belloave South. Here's Walgreens, and then this is Taco Bell. They're in for an area variance to reduce the required landscaping buffer area along the east property line is supposed um, along the east property line. It's supposed to be a minimum of five feet wide, and they're proposing to have zero feet of buffer area at some sections. The starting land uses are all commercial. Uh, the site is zoned commercial, which allows a restaurant with site plan review. And we just reviewed this last month, um, to go over the modifications, which we'll get to in a second. This is a photo from Google. Um, you can see the existing drive lane, uh, drive-through lanes are right here, and the drop, you know, the passer lane is here. There's a guardrail along the property line, and this is pretty much the property line. You can see there's no landscaping right now. So the buffer, as it exists today, is not being met. Um, next photo, this is in the back. I was going around the drive-through, making that turn where you get the, the order, the menu order. This is Walgreens, the backside of Walgreens. You can see the guardrail is way back here. Again, there is no landscaping as it is existing today. This is the site plan. Um, the, you went over the proposed changes last month, basically to add the, um, call-ahead, the order online lane, and the new drive-lanes. It's gonna have an extra lane there. It's being reconfigured. Pretty much, everything below this yellow line represents new or extensions of the drive-lanes. And again, above the line, they have zero feet of landscape buffer, and they're proposing to have zero feet of landscape buffer. That's why they need the area variance in this area. In terms of comments, we have the normal, um, county state comment that says in reviewing the area variance, the local board should consider the benefit to the applicant as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, using the five factors for an area variance as stated in New York City law. Um, any questions on this one?
Lisa, do you need to abstain?
Well, this one goes to the zoning board of appeals, not the city council.
Just, just asking if she needs to abstain.
I would, I would defer to Mr. Sly. But-
Alright.
He's muted. You're muted.
She doesn't need to abstain.
Then, then staff- Alright, staff has made recommendation that this is a project of local concern only, with our comment to be returned to the applicant, or the local agency. Make that motion. Is her second?
I'll second Dave.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deb. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Okay. Okay, uh, we've gotten those four issues out of the way. Now we're gonna- Excuse me, what?
Did Lisa, did Lisa abstain on that?
No, she did not need to.
She did not? Okay.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to Sport Island. And again, please follow Mr. Borsey's, uh, ground rules as far as, uh, who can speak and those type of things. Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, um, so are you seeing the whole town here?
Yes.
Okay. So this project is proposed by Sport Island Holdings for a resort. And I will get into more specifics on that, but at this point, I'm, I'm calling it a resort. Uh, it is a site plan review used in the Marine Residential Zoning District. So it is allowed with this review process. And, um, we're seeing it because of its proximity to the Canadian border, or also the, the edge of the town of Alexandria. Oh, I forgot. So we did get a number of, um, letters and, uh, emails and so on and so forth about the project. And we, we count that as correspondence. And, um, normally, we cover that at the beginning, but thi- this is actually, um, you know, we've got quite a bit more than we usually get. So I thought I would just briefly summarize some of the issues, um, as you read through the letters. And as I said, I, I sent most of them that we received in a timely manner onto the board members for their, their, um, ability to read them. So, um, there were, I think, over thirty, yep?
Go ahead with the description of the project, and we'll acknowledge those letters, but they can be taken as comments. But let's find out what the project is right now.
Okay, sure. So, uh, as I said, the Canadian border is, um, the reason we're seeing it. And it's about, uh, three or four hundred feet from, from the pro, from the edge of the islands to the Canadian border. So that's within the five hundred feet that would trigger it. So, uh, stepping back from, you know, the narrow view of the island, you know, you can see from this map, that the Village of Alexandria Bay is here, um, Bow Castle is here, so Bow Castle's about two miles from the project. And, um, Wellesley Island is here. Trainpoint State Park is, is across, just down river. That's, that's another landmark for you. Um, this is Grenadier Island in Canada. There's a number of Canadian islands, I would say, in, in somewhat close proximity. Um, but most of the islands nearby are, are in America. And there's a reference to the Summerland Group of Islands. I actually don't know if that includes these islands here, the eight or nine here, or if it includes Douglas and Lotus. I don't really know, but it's, anyway, just so that you, you know, it's in this area. Um, okay? So, as part of the resort, um, we did get a, a written description of the project scope from the applicant's engineer. Now, I don't know if this is with the town yet, if they've seen this description, but just so you know. Um, so the resort would include sort of three main target market areas. So, uh, there, there's a single-family rental aspect to the project, consisting of the six existing dwelling units. Uh, sort of a VRBO style with, with amenities. Then the next, uh, focus area would be using the entire island, um, rented by someone for corporate-style retreats, family gatherings, team-building seminars, et cetera, using the twenty-four bedrooms with amenities. Um, the third area of focus would be events such as weddings, family reunions, or corporate outings. Would also include amenities provided, um, with outside support, uh, with potential catering and temporary bathroom facilities. The event would occur around and on the existing five thousand square foot patio area as shown on the site plan. And we're, we'll get to the site plan. So each one of those includes amenities, so the next description are the amenities themselves. So it would include a small social bar facility, or, or a tiki bar, with elevated deck professionally run to cater to guests during private events, but also to support island rental guests. Uh, a pickleball court and basketball court. Those are one and the same. I, I think we just, um, use it differently. Uh, with the water activities, um, would include kayaks, water sports, floating. Not sure exactly what that means. Uh, large patio with pool and hot tub. Power boat slips for island guests, and boat rentals for, rentals for island guests. Um, so now I'm gonna go back and describe the area again. Um, so as we kinda narrow our focus on the area, um, this is the project location, Sport Island, which also includes Little Lehigh Island and Picnic Island, this very small island. And these are connected with bridges. You can see the bridge here, um, then there's a smaller one here as well. And just so you know, you know, Douglas Island is, is here, Lotus Island, Ina, or Ena Island, Sunnyside Island, uh, Idlewild is a little less than four hundred feet away from Lehigh. Summerland Island is a little less than five hundred feet away, and we'll, we'll get into that in a second. Arcadia Island, um, Little Channel Island, and Sylvan Island. We've gotten letters from, I believe, all of those. And, and they can speak for themselves as well, but I'm just sort of noting. Um, so this drawing is from the applicant, and it's showing the Canadian border, and then the actual measurements from the other islands that are close by. Um, so as I said, Idlewild is three hundred and seventy-five feet away, um, so on and so forth. Summerland is four hundred and ninety-four feet. So the, these are, um, what I would consider to be the, uh, the neighborhood of the project. I did a site visit, and I, I will get it, get to that in a moment. So this is the last aerial I'm gonna show. Um, these are the islands again. And you can see that these are existing, uh, homes, boathouses, and, and some docks, um, not very many. Uh, and then there's some pathways there now, or, or when this image was taken in two thousand and twenty. And you can see the nearby, um, seasonal homes and properties, uh, you know, relatively close to this island. I, I, I didn't show the other two to the south, um, in this image, but, you know, y- you get the idea. Um, so this image was submitted by an opponent. Just, just be, it shows how close their dock is to, and how, how close they, they're looking at this, um, uh, Sport Island, okay? And then the background is Little Lehigh, and Picnic Island is here with the graph on it. And I, I'm gonna keep going. So thi, I did a site visit, uh, Sunday wi, with Sarah, so we both, um, were able to get to the island area, neighborhood. So here's, here's Little Lehigh Island, which has one house on it and a boathouse. And we'll get into the number of bedrooms when we do the site plan. Um, but then this is Sport Island, as I mentioned, and Picnic Island now has this flagpole on it for, for reference. It's, it's mainly a, a grass island at this point in time. Now, this shot, uh, I sort of reoriented, showing how close Summerland Island is to Sport Island and Picnic Island. You can see Arcadia in the background. So you can see how, you know, how they relate to each other, the, the, the island. And this is the front of my boat. I kept that for reference whenever I could. So this is, uh, focusing on the other end, um, or the other side, so Little Lehigh and then Idlewild. And those are actually, those two islands are closer than Sport and, um, Summerland. Just a, again, as a reference to, to understand the area. So here we are, zooming cor, a little bit closer to Little Lehigh, and you can see the house there and the, uh, boathouse. And, um, this is the end of Sport. So here I kinda back out a little bit, showing mostly Sport Island and Picnic Island, and Little Lehigh's in the background. They're connected via this bridge. And you can see the boathouse on Sport Island and the, um, mansion, the, the, the biggest house on the island. And as we kinda move down the island, down river, you can see the, the, uh, ten-bedroom mansion and the bridge to Picnic Island. And this, along here somewhere is where one of the docks is being proposed. Okay, I, I can't draw that, cause I couldn't do the scale correctly. Um, but this building here is where the tiki bar will be located, and they'll add a, a patio. That's part of the project, is adding a patio. Okay? So moving down the island some more, um, this is a ten-bedroom, uh, house. And, uh, Picnic Island, and Picnic Island is, is proposing to have a dock along the length of it. Um, this is one of the docks that's there now. I'm not sure exactly when it was, um, constructed. And this is where that tiki bar, um, building is going to be. Moving down a little more, there's the tiki bar. Uh, this is a two-bedroom, uh, boathouse that exists. This is a five-bedroom house that is there, and this is the, I believe, a three-bedroom caretaker's, um, house. And then back here is, is a one-bedroom ice house, is what they're calling it. And those names are just for reference. So a, a, as I said, I'm gonna keep moving down the island here, and you can see again, the caretaker's house, the five-bedroom house, and the boathouse. So now we've drifted below the island and come back around. Um, so this is that caretaker's house. So now I'm, I'm toward Canada, facing back toward the, um, easterly direction. So, um, then, so this is that five-bedroom house, tiki house, or tiki bar building, one-bedroom ice house. And then this is the mansion. Now, this is the patio area behind, which again, you'll see a site plan in a moment. So, oh yeah, so this is, on this side of the, um, retention wall, will be the temporary bathrooms. And they'll be screened from view from the east on the drawing. They're showing, so Summerland Group will not see them if the, uh, tree, if the buffer is, you know, planted and so on. Okay. And then, as I move upriver, in this case, again, the ten-bedroom, uh, mansion, and there's a sort of a wraparound porch around the entire front and two sides. Okay, so here we're, uh, let's see, where are we? Oh yeah, so this is Sport Island here, and this is Little Lehigh, just to give you an idea, um, what it looks like today, or Sunday. And this is, I, we came through under the bridge. This is Little Lehigh, um, this is a, now I'm forgetting how many bedrooms. I, I think a three-bedroom house, or, um, Mr. LaSalle can correct me if I'm wrong. This is a, a, an existing boathouse. Uh, last, this is our last shot. So this is, uh, facing down river at the, at the head of Sport Island, just to show you that, um, the largest house. And again, the patio will be on, on the front of it. No, I'm sorry, the patio will be on the back. Yeah. So, um, here's the original site plan we, we got from the applicant, and it shows a number of amenities. It, it was hard to color this in, so I actually requested one without the aerial. So I'm gonna present the one without an aerial on it. So here's the site plan minus the aerial photograph. And again, we're, we're seeing a ten-bedroom house here with a wraparound porch that's existing. Um, a two-bedroom boathouse here that's existing, five-bedroom house here with a porch, the one-bedroom ice house existing, uh, and then the caretaker cottage, three-bedroom here. Then, uh, yeah, so this house on Little Lehigh is three bedrooms. And so the pink items are being proposed. So that is the basketball pickleball court here. Um, a water sports building, a storage building here. Um, the temporary bathroom facilities as required with that screening that I mentioned. Uh, you know, facing, um, it's toward Summerland Island. And then the patio is stated to exist now, and they're adding a pool and a hot tub. And, uh, this pathway here is new, the stone walkway, with, that would connect to Picnic Island and, and this dock, as well as this dock here. And then, um, the tiki bar is here, uh, and then they, to complete that use, they would add the, um, proposed patio here. Um, this dock is, is there now, surrounding the boathouse. So it'd be extended here. And then these finger docks, uh, would have, um, you know, the, the hundred and ten feet out, and then the fingers to, to tie up to, um, to add more boat capacity. Same with this one here, um. So, uh, also, they're showing existing, uh, sanitary facilities and leach fields, um, he, for most of the homes. It's not shown for this. I, I just sort of assume it's there. Um, but again, the, uh, engineer can speak to that, Mr. LaSalle. And trying to think if I'm, in their verbiage, they were describing, um, a place to, uh, swim that's protected in here, like a small beach. Like a family-oriented swimming area there. And this, this pathway exists- And this, this pathway exists, um, I think. And, okay, so are there any questions so far from the uh, board members?
Yeah, Andy, this is David. Uh, is the entire island, the two islands, under one ownership?
Um, yes, Sport Island LLC.
Okay, so, so all these buildings exist, and there's one person that owns them, or one corporation that owns them, right?
Uh, correct.
Okay, okay.
And Andy, Andy, this is Cliff. I've got a question. Uh, how many, you can see how many bedrooms. I, I'd like to know with the dockage, how many uh, how many berths are there?
Well, uh, I believe the applicant stated about thirty.
So you've got, you've got more than enough, yeah, you've got an excess of berths as dock compared to the bedrooms on the, for uh, on the houses on the island. So you have more, more dock space than you really need. Because probably you're not gonna have a boat for each person that's gonna go there, right? So there's an ex- it seems as though there's an excess of dock in sport with the housing rental that they got on. So about thirty docks. Okay, thanks.
Sure. I, I will say that they were indicating the amenities. So providing the services and amenities would take more staff. And I, you know, kind of assumed some of them will be arriving on boat. So, you know, I think that's where part of that comes in. Any other questions by the board members? Okay, so I think now we would open it up to the um, project engineer to fill in if I forgot anything or just want us to clarify.
Certainly. Mike, did you want um, uh, the attorney to address his concerns now, or wait until after the more description from the engineer?
Well, I, I thought we'd give the engineer an opportunity to fill in anything that Andy may have missed.
All right.
Your comments.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, Mike LaSalle here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think Andy did a great job. He got most of uh, everything. Um, I think uh, the dock question is good. We do show, you can see, we show proposed dock locations of twenty-two berths there on the two main new docks. Um, the other docks that right there, yep. So that's kind of the main area where we anticipate a lot of the uh, the transient rentals would be parking. Um, and then where those other spots are coming from is that a hundred and, I believe it's a hundred and fifty-foot pier on the left. That would be considered more of a service dock, uh, for emergencies as well. So one side of that dock would be left for uh, fireboats or emergency access and whatnot. And that's a good spot for uh, service boats to pull in for whether it be a party or whatever. Um, the boathouse existing, obviously, with number two is that two-bedroom boathouse, and that has a couple slips inside of it. So I think that's where the thirty number comes from. But again, the twenty-two is really the focus. Uh, but that could include uh, potentially a pontoon boat rental, anything like that could be part of that too, so. Uh, and then the only other thing I want to add was the tiki spa, tiki bar uh, is the, is a term we're using. But it's really uh, that's the old uh, billards room. It used to be the old entertaining area, um, cigar room type thing. It's a very neat structure. It's, that's where all the artifacts have kind of been displayed and very original in there. And, you know, the history of the island is located around that, that building. So that's why it's, we're, we're kind of turning that into the focus point of the island, like kind of a gathering place for uh, the people that might be renting the island. That would be kind of a center point gathering place with the billards room. Uh, the piano, auto play piano that they restored, all that is in that specific, specific location, so. I think other than that, I think Andy really has captured everything to that regard.
Okay, so Mike, this is Cliff Schneider, uh, again. Uh, so you're, you're, this project, you're not requesting any variance, any request for variance with use or, or area events at all, are you?
No, no variances at all.
All right, Andy, you want to summarize the, the letters that we've received from uh, others who are not the applicant?
Uh, su- sure, sure. Um, and again, I don't, we, we couldn't say everything. But just generally, uh, there are a number of issues and themes that came up, so I, I'll just go over that quickly. Um, so then, then it's not in any specific order. But um, they, a, a lot of them noted incompatible land use in the neighborhood with residential to commercial, you know, there'd be conflicts and, and so on with that. Um, and they cite the tiki bar, the amount of docks, the impact of events. Um, then uh, boating safety, number of boats in the area, potentially drunk boaters, large boats. Uh, would, if, if they pump out things into that, into the water there, that wouldn't be good uh, for the environment. Um, recreational safety, um, there's a, there are a lot of swimmers in the area, kayakers, inner tubes, uh, boats that raft in the area now. You know, they either tie up or they, they drift or whatever. So they're citing that that use is very prevalent uh, now. Um, and could conflict with the events and, and then the additional traffic. Uh, event issues, uh, any number of event issues that were mentioned, such as noise, light, septic, uh, boat safety, uh, police and fire protection, they were brought up. Um, inadequate seeker information uh, was, was brought up. Um, environment, other environmental issues, impact on fish by dock expansion, um, possible bonfires. Um, the number of them were noting the burning of debris from the house renovations has been an, an ongoing thing, and that's concerning, given the lack of fire protection in the area. And not that there's a lack, but potentially a delay with getting a fireboat from Clayton or, or Alex Bay or wherever they come from, just that, that uh, something they were talking about. Um, if approved, really no control on, on the use. Um, they're saying that, uh, septic system concerns, um, the need for porta potties for events. So their argument is, well, is that really a good idea? Um, and how do you make sure that they're handled correctly? Um, border enforcement with being so close to Canada, um, that's another issue raised. Property values, uh, which could decline nearby, um, that's what they were saying. Um, burning of debris and, and open fires. And then ongoing, um, will there be fire pits with the project? So that's a really quick rendition of the over thirty pieces of communication.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to add that, um, just for the uh, other people on the call, that copies of all the correspondence that we were provided, um, were provided um, to the county planning board members. So it, it wasn't, th- they weren't just hearing the, the summary of all the concerns um, that were put forth. They did have the opportunity to actually read all those letters and copies of the emails.
Okay.
I think, Andy, I think uh, one of the public has a question because Steve Wood raised his hand. Um, is that what that means?
Uh, let me.
Okay. Mr. Wood, bra- raise your issue now, then or your question, please?
Um, hit star six to unmute yourself. Well, we, we can ask him later.
Andy, why don't you go ahead with um, your, the project review comments?
Okay. So um, let's see. So here, here are the comments. Um, and we, we usually have the recommendation on the same sheet, but it, it was longer, so we have it on a separate sheet. Um, but, so the first comment deal with county and state issues. Um, the applicant should contact the Jefferson County Fire Prevention and Building Code Department to determine what building permits are required for the project, including house renovations. Increasing capacity would require the building code to be met. Um, the, I'm gonna just keep going. The applicant should coordinate with the New York State Department of Health as soon as possible to ensure any use beyond residential will have adequate septic systems. Meet requirements for food service permit, uh, potable water supply as applicable, pool and hot tub use beyond residential, uh, and fire safety requirements for the buildings that may also apply. Um, also, under the town's adopted local waterfront revitalization program plan, a consistency assessment form should be completed to ensure the project aligns with the Town of Alexandria's Waterfront Consistency Review Law Policy. Um, the proposed docks require a permit from New Or- New York State DC and/or US Army Corps of Engineers. Um, then we had a few um, local comments. Uh, when deliberating on this proposal, the local board should consider the neighborhood in close proximity to the three islands, which is predominantly a collection of seasonal homes. The proposed large gatherings, such as weddings and corporate retreats, as well as the tiki bar, may introduce daytime and nighttime noise, glare, entertainment, and boat traffic beyond what would normally be expected by seasonal residences. The local board should request a more detailed description of the proposed resort for its consideration. This would include the proposed uses, new structures, expected number of guests, boat traffic level, number of events per season, quiet hours, and whether fire pits will be proposed. Um, and we, we say that because we've got this description from the applicant. Um, we, we want to make sure that they have any description that makes it more clear um, for them to consider. Uh, moving on, the resort criteria in the zoning law addresses only a limited number of impacts when compared to the project description. The local board should ensure the project consistency uh, with the town zoning law's site plan criteria, which states adequate protection of adjacent, or in this case nearby, properties from noise, glare, unsightliness, or other objectionable features from conflicting uses. And all uses complement, complement each other and not be offensive to the district or adjacent areas uses. So those two criteria are in the town zoning law. And um, usually when you hear the word adjacent, you think of a property adjacent, like connecting to it. But i- in this case, we feel that the neighborhood, i- is separated by water, but it's still what we think is as a neighborhood and should, um, those criteria should apply. To address potential noise, quiet hours could be established. Similarly, any proposed lighting should be dark sky compliant and limit fixtures producing direct or indirect glare towards nearby residential islands. The local board should consider the locations and number of boat slips. For example, the hundred and ten permanent dock may impact the river between the islands as this dock placement and orientation may impact the already narrow area between the islands. Um, the proposed temporary bathroom facility should be completely screened, which, which we're, we're saying screened from the Port Island side, as well as the Canadian side of the island. Um, the seeker form, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, uh, submitted with the application, appears to be missing a complete description and includes some inconsistent statements when looking at the application and site plan. The local board should review the seeker form to determine if more information is needed. Uh, they should determine that, whether a full EAF, which is the Full Environmental Assessment Form, may be required. Without a full project description and detailed scope of the project activities, uh, the local board cannot adequately judge whether significant environmental impacts may occur, which is what seeker is designed to do. Um, a coordinated review with the other involved agencies, such as New York State Department of Health, New York State DC, US Army Corps of Engineers, County Code Office, should be utilized. Um, and lastly, the local board should consider each of the proposed activities and determine the scope of potential impacts on the neighborhood. Local board can then identify mitigating actions. If approval is considered, the local board should be specific as to what uses are approved or allowed, and any conditions or restrictions they may place on the project to limit potential neighborhood impact. Um, so those were our um, project um, comments or issues.
Mr. Sly, you wanna speak now? Mr. Sly, your microphone's not on.
Sorry about, sorry about that.
There you go.
Andy, do you have the largest scale chart that I provided to you that would show the smallest area? I can show you which one it is just by holding it up to the camera.
I, I have it. I think it was at the beginning.
Well, no, you had one that was the smaller scale, which means larger area. Do you have the, do you have the, that zooms in even from, even closer?
Um, it's not in the PowerPoint. I can try to grab it.
I, I'd like the board to take a look at it, please.
Okay, yes, just a moment.
Sure.
It's, it's gonna take me a second.
It's okay.
Um, what, what date did you send that?
I can tell you in a second. Oh, what day? Did I email it to you?
Yeah.
I don't have that in front of me, and I'm afraid if I signed out to try to find it, I'd never get back on the darn computer again.
No, um.
It's probably within the last week, I would think.
Yeah, I, it was in here, but then I, I took it out.
Yeah.
Um, just a moment.
Important for the board to see the relative location of these islands up close and personal.
Right. So, the um, uh, so the, this one isn't good enough?
No, I, no, the thing about the nautical chart is it kind of gives you a real clue as to what everything's labeled, how they're laid out, everything, and it orients you to the north.
Yes, um, okay, I'm gonna grab that now from your email. Just give me a few more seconds.
Sure, sure.
Excuse me, this is Sarah. Can I just interject something right now while Andy's looking for that um, exhibit? Uh, there's been a number of people that have entered the presentation in the last like twenty minutes. Um, if these people want to speak, could they please um, state that in the chat box? Because right now, after Mr. Sly has done speaking, um, I do have two other people that might be interested in speaking. Um, that would be Adam Burke and Alan Hannaford. If there are other people that are interested in speaking, please indicate in the chat box so that um, we will know that in advance. Thank you.
I apologize this, for this taking long. I'm an old Coast Guard guy, so I'm used to charts.
Yeah.
Well, Andy, I just, I believe I just scanned that and emailed it to you, if that's easier for you to grab.
Oh, okay. It hasn't come yet.
And Andy, didn't, didn't the board see it though? I believe we received the nautical charge via email.
Um, you, you may have, um, so Mike scanned the whole thing. All right, I, okay, I'll, I'll get it now. So.
This is modern technology. You gotta email something to the guy at the desk tonight to you.
Yeah. So, okay, hold on, I, I need to make a new. So, okay, hold on. I need to make a new line.
What was that one?
That was the next.
That was the other one.
Next to smallest scale, or next to largest scale. There you go.
Right.
There you go.
Okay, but I have to crop it.
Or turn it, yeah.
Yeah.
Almost.
Well, it came through as a PDF. They're not as good for us.
So can you turn it, maybe?
Yeah, I'll try.
Sport will be on the top.
Yeah, it's a PDF, so you can't. Sorry, Mike, it's on a JPEG. I can't rotate it either. It doesn't like PDFs. See, I can't click these. Normally you can. That's where the rotation is.
The reason I asked is that one of the first comments made was it was kind of hard to tell what the Summerland group was. That is the Summerland group, if you can turn it 90 degrees.
Yeah. Okay, I have an idea.
Okay.
So I will zoom in on this.
Okay.
Basically the same thing. Okay, so that's.
There you go. Bingo. Thank you. I'm all set. Thanks.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Prosser, members of the board, I recognize I have a face from radio, but you're kind of stuck with me. But thank you for your time, if only for a moment. I know you've had a full agenda. My name's Bob Sly and attorney representing the residents of the Summerland group, which is located in the town of Alexandria. That's Sport Island, Idlewild, Sunnyside, Ina, Summerland, and Arcadia Islands. I have some very brief comments on the proposed site plan. So I urge you to look at the chart that's up there. It tells the story much better than I can. No set of islands in the North Country is as quaint and undisturbed as the Summerland group. And that group is as much a residential neighborhood as any other neighborhood in the North Country. We just heard Andy refer to that, with one exception. They all share the same front yard. Yet the site plan before you proposes to establish resort uses in that front yard. Indeed, approval of this site plan would make every island of the Summerland group a part of the resort rather than keeping Sport Island as part of the residential neighborhood. I'm gonna say that again, because approval of this site plan would make every island of the Summerland group a part of the resort rather than keeping Sport Island as part of the residential neighborhood. You know, it's interesting to me that they talk about the uses that they plan to use the island, Sport Island, and Little Lehigh for. Nothing's gonna control the people who go there as to how they intend to use their time in the Summerland group. And they're gonna use the common area that's in the middle. So please think about that. This site plan suggests an entire upheaval of the residential neighborhood for the benefit of the developers. And it's proposed to be established only 300 feet from the Canadian border. And that's why the matter's before you. The site plan proposes 443 feet of new dockage. Three of those docks would extend more than 110 feet into the protected inner and common area of the islands, not to the open waters to the north of Sport Island, but to everyone's front yard. Each of the protruding docks contains fingers for dockage. In total, those docks would support 33 larger boats of up to 30 foot in length. Is that in any way consistent with the residential neighborhood? Of course not. It's a marina. It's a marina. And people are gonna be sleeping on those boats. They're not just gonna be tucked away very quietly in their bedrooms of these mansions. They're gonna be sleeping on their yachts that they pull up to the marina. Now, 239L of the general municipal law requires this board review countywide considerations in respect to the, quote, "protection of community character as regards predominant land uses and the relation between residential and non-residential uses." That's 239L 2 subdivision D. So what is this board's view of the protection of community character associated with the Thousand Islands? What are the predominant land uses? You already know. You live here. The islands are filled with quaint, picturesque, single-family homes. This site plan represents anything but that. And what about the relation between residential and non-residential uses? There cannot be sound barriers erected across water. There cannot be fences or yard setbacks to prevent resort uses from interfering with the uses associated with the single-family homes in this neighborhood. This will not be a resort on an island. It will be a resort on six islands: Sport, Idlewild, Sunnyside, Ina, Summerland, and Arcadia. So yes, the county planning board can make a recommendation. This is not of local concern only. Among the recommendations that you can make lies in the statutory authority to recommend disapproval of the site plan, which would allow a resort of this magnitude to ruin an island neighborhood. There may well be over 1,000 islands, but a few present the island community character we have all come to love and cherish. This character has come to define a significant part of the North Country as a whole. We love the Thousand Islands. We all say we love them. This is gonna destroy one of those neighborhoods. So on behalf of the remaining neighbors in this island group and as a legitimate county concern, we ask that that character be preserved for future generations. The Summerland group, this unique neighborhood with a unique character, should not be allowed to be ruined by this planned resort. Therefore, we ask you recommend disapproval of this site plan by the local planning board. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? You see, if this site plan is approved, they can say they're gonna limit their uses, but they're entitled to have any use allowed under the zoning ordinance. So they talk a good story. But if you approve this site plan, any site plan use that falls within the town zoning law is fair game, regardless of what they say. Now.
Mr. Sly, how do you feel that the site plan as presented would include those other islands there? Would it not be limited to just the larger Sport Island?
My point was that it's everybody's front yard, that whole central area. That's why I wanted this chart put up. That's the common area for all. They didn't decide to put their docks on the north side of the island into the open water towards Canada. They put them in where? Where it's most protected, where it's protected by all the islands. And that is a common area of all these neighbors. And it's used by all the neighbors. So that's why I say that, you know, that it affects everybody and that that is the neighborhood. The front yard's part of the neighborhood. It's the entire character of the place, which we say is going to be dissolved if that becomes a resort.
What are those purple lines that kind of zigzag to the island and other places?
Those are underwater cables.
Okay.
Mr. Sly, does town law allow for a resort in the marine residential district?
As a site plan review use, it does. It also allows a marina as a site plan review use, but you can impose special use conditions upon a marina, not on a resort.
I know there were some comments where people were saying, don't allow the, I believe, don't allow resorts to be included or in the town law. I took a look at it. I think it still is.
It's still there. It's still there, yeah. But it's gotta be site plan approval, which means it has to have an approved site plan, which is why we're proposing it.
Which means, and people make comments and they have concerns and exactly.
Sure.
Do any other county planning board members have questions for Mr. Sly? If not, I would just like to say one thing about one of the comments that Bob made about if, if, again, this is a, if at the local level, this is approved as a site plan review, that then the applicants can take that approval and do what they want there. I would disagree with that if the town, again, if the town does an approval with this, they can attach conditions to that approval. And one of the things that we've commented on is that if, again, using that word, because I don't know what the town was going to do on this, but if the town were to look at doing a approval of this, they can be very specific on what they are approving. So that would sit with that property as long as what they're doing meets all of those, you know, conditions, which can be which can be what types of uses and restrictions on the types of uses that they may allow on there. And what that means is in the future, if they, you know, go to maybe, you know, do a, say, a marina like is defined in the zoning law where it's more of a commercial operation, not a use associated with another use, the town would be able to come back and say, look, that was not part of our original approval of your site plan, so you are out of compliance for that, our approval, therefore you have to stop doing whatever use they're doing that wasn't part of the original approval, and you have to go through the review process again for any additional, you know, use that they may propose in the future. So I just want our board sort of to understand that just, you know, giving site plan approval doesn't necessarily mean, you know, carte blanche for anything that is listed under site plan review or that opens it up to whatever may be listed currently under, you know, like a resort. The definition in that. The local board, which we often tell local boards, is you should be very specific in what you're approving, be it site plan or special use permit, so it's down and it's in writing exactly what the applicant is being approved to conduct on the island. So then if anything is done in the future that doesn't meet that, then the board can go back and say, look, we have this, you know, official motion that was done approving it, and it lists X, Y, and Z, and now you're wanting to do 1, 2, and 3, which is different, and you can't do that without approval.
Well, I will, it sounds like I'm arguing against myself here, Mike, but I do disagree with you on that. Because certainly if you have special use permit issues, you can issue special use permits to govern certain uses. But let's say that the, I'll just pick a simple example. Let's say that the resort thing says you can have a restaurant, right? And you're telling me that the planning board can say you can have everything but a restaurant? We're not gonna let you have a restaurant? I don't see how you can.
No, I'm saying that their approval would be for only a restaurant. It wouldn't be for anything else that may be listed as a site plan review use in that district. So it's not that they're giving them approval for site plan review uses. They're giving an approval for a specific site plan review use.
Yeah, I didn't mean to. I was only using the site plan review use as an example. There are no site plan review uses for a resort. All right, so you're telling me that the planning board can impose conditions on what allowed uses they're going to allow and what they're not?
For a resort. They've applied for resort use, and the local board can, you know, be specific on what they're allowing as part of the resort district, or resort use.
Yeah, again, I don't want to argue against myself. That'd be a good argument over a cup of coffee someday, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, or something stronger, but yeah.
It seems to me the issue is not the fact that people are gonna occupy those buildings and live there for two weeks or four days or whatever it is that they're gonna be there, but it's the additional ancillary uses as a venue for weddings or those type of things. It seems to me that that seems where the issue is, that there doesn't seem to be the objection to people occupying those buildings. It's just additional either use as a bar or restaurant, those type of things. I agree with you, you know, it doesn't say restaurant, but that should be indicated that those rooms go without a restaurant.
Well, I think our concern is the additional 33 to 35 boats that can tie up and have extra berths on them. They don't necessarily have to stay in rooms. There's no indication that they're gonna limit those persons to living in those houses, so rather than 34 beds or whatever, now we've got 75 beds. Now we've got all kinds of people on boats.
Oh, you're concerned with people living on their boat there, yeah.
Sure. I'm just saying that it makes it sound like it's a smaller thing, but when you add all those boats and the number of people it can hold, it's a much bigger operation than what it seems.
I tend to agree with what Dave was saying, because originally when Andy was presenting, he talked about the different clientele, and he talked about the family units, the VBR style. Well, that was the history of that island. That was the history of how that was used. And Dave is right. I don't think anyone would be of concern with how that's used in that way, or if it's used as a family reunion or so. But what you're getting at, and I agree, is the concern over the additional uses, and a lot of that is tied to the dockage. And I think that's something that the local board, Town Board in Alexandria, could use to try to control some of the use that could be there. And that is to take a good look at the dockage and how that's going to be used. And yes, I think the concern is probably from a lot of people, gonna be the events with a lot of people, there's gonna probably be concern with if all of a sudden it becomes a site where power boaters want to come flying in and have a drink and power up to the next bar or something like that. I can understand that. But historically, it was used for family units and some of those uses. And it fits with the law and everything else. So I think it's a matter of what everyone was sort of saying is that the local board use some control and take a good, hard look at how they want that to be used and put some restrictions on it.
Yeah. Thanks, Cliff. David, it's all right if I add something to. I think Bob makes some good points. I just want to be critical that the 22 slips there, the idea of an actual marina there would make a ton of sense for the developers, that the intent is that to support those single-family units, which would be very similar to any single-family unit in any of the islands. There's actually single-family units in the islands next door that have up to 8, 10, 12 slips on their island currently to support one single-family unit. And I think that's why we didn't feel it was unreasonable to show those 22 slips for that use. And the idea of somebody sleeping on their boat, transient-type marina users, is it possible somebody might stay on their boat? Absolutely, just like any dock. But I think to actually run as a marina would be very tough on an island, because to have a seasonal slip on an island, you'd have to, a lot of people go in and out of marinas with their vehicles, and I don't think that's gonna happen here. So I think the idea of the marina will probably fall short of what the neighbors will be worried about, and I can understand that. You triple your capacity, but the idea that this is not being run as a marina, it's really a supporting of the single-family structures. And when there might be a gathering of a family reunion or potentially a wedding where there might be uses, but the docks can't support a marina for multiple reasons, because they don't have the sanitary facilities to support a 22-slip marina there to meet D.C. standards and all that stuff. So I think that we don't want that to be a big concern of people of having a marina, a full-pledged marina there, because I just don't think it works economically or in the target of the facility.
Is there any other comments from the county planning board members? Okay, if not, I believe I've been keeping track from the chat section of the people who would like to speak, so I'm going to go down the list in order. I'll say your name, and if you could please unmute yourself and, you know, speak for, you know, up to five minutes. That would be appreciated. If I call someone's name and after a little bit I don't hear anything from them, I'll move on to the next name. And if you were having trouble unmuting yourself, then you can, at the end, I'll open it up for any other people who would like to comment that didn't list their name. The first one up is Joe Lord. Mr. Lord, if you could unmute yourself and you may talk to the board.
Uh, I'm gonna pass.
Okay, the, the next up then is a, uh, Jeannie Flynn.
Uh, Jeannie Flynn is, uh, yielding her time.
Okay, then the next after that is a Lucinda Lord.
She's, uh, we're all yielding our time.
Okay, I, I assume you're, you're Hunter Lord?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a- after the Lord, so the next one was Adam Burke.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, for this. I, I won't take five minutes, I don't think, because I think, uh, uh, Bob Slid did a great job kind of explaining, you know, what our concerns are here. But I'm the owner of Idlewild Island, which is, uh, one of the closest islands to this proposed project. Um, and I thought I'd just talk a little bit about the kind of neighborhood characteristics here and how we really feel like this is not something that's gonna be consistent with our neighborhood, within the neighborhood. So the distances here may sound like a lot, three or four hundred feet. But the fact is, we can hear things that are going on, on the other islands. I can hear the dogs barking, I can hear conversations sometimes, depending on kind of quiet night. I can, uh, smell when people are cooking. These distances are really not what they seem, it's very close. The last couple of years, you know, this construction's been going on over there. And we have been listening to that all summer, for two summers. Backup deep with heavy equipment, um, large excavators, hammering, all of that sort of thing. We've all kind of thought, okay, that's fine, because this was, our impression was, and we've been told that this was going to be fixing up these buildings to be sold as residential units. We're all very supportive of. Now we find out that this is not the case. This is going to be a resort. And by the looks of the plans, it looks like this was always what this was intended to be. They were trying to do what they could until it became time that they had to, uh, show their hand here. So I really think, you know, this is something that's very inconsistent with this neighborhood. And I think one thing that Bob pointed out, it is a very unique area. This is, you know, I mean, Jefferson County is very kind of blessed to have, uh, the Thousand Islands within it, right? This is a place that people come from all over the world to see. It's one of the most beautiful and uniquely beautiful places in the world. Talked to a lot of people who have traveled throughout the world and they have consistently said to me, this is one of the most incredible places they've seen. It's very short-sighted, I think, for a town within the county to say, you know what, let's start commercializing these islands. Let's, let's put docks all around them. Let's have big parties on them. Not what attracts the world to come here and see these islands. It's, it's, it's squandering a very valuable and precious resource irreversibly. So I think that's, those are my main points. I do feel like the other thing is, I mean, I, I sent a letter in, my points are there. We're remote, we're very remote, we're up on the Canadian border, we're, we're across the shipping channel. Any kind of thing that happens out there, it's not easy for people other than our immediate neighbors to really see what's going on. If they decide to have all-night wedding receptions and parties and whatnot, and even if the town says, no, we don't want that sort of thing out there, there's no stopping them from doing it and then maybe getting a slap on the wrist. So we're all gonna be affected by this. Uh, it's a terrible idea for all the letters I put, all the reasons I put in my letter. But I just, uh, I wanted to, to, you know, express this to you, being a very close neighbor here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Um, the next one up is Alan Hanford.
Yes, uh, yes, here I am, uh, appreciate the fact that you're giving us a couple of minutes to talk about this. I've got a, uh, a cottage, uh, uh, on the opposite side of Summerland, but I'm still very concerned about this. You know, we, we understood this to be a twenty-four bedroom, maybe forty-eight residents would be inhabiting this. But, uh, you know, we're worried about the, the economics of it will drive a lot of people to be there at one time. Obviously weddings are the biggest venue for, for making money on these things. You know, weddings typically have a hundred and fifty to two hundred people. Are they gonna be able to, uh, put temporary housing on there, tents, um, platforms, whatever? I certainly hope that, that that's not gonna happen. Already, we, we've, uh, uh, seen many environmental violations. They've had, uh, two or three burn piles of debris, which is particularly forbidden by the EPA. Uh, there are currently now, um, a couple of, uh, significant piles there that we assume are, are ready to be burned. The other, one of the other, uh, more detailed concerns is they started out as residential. Now they've gone commercial. Well, there's, there's, uh, obviously an overload potential of septic systems, which they may or may not be able to anticipate. But, uh, but the electrical and, uh, the power distribution, the power usage can change dramatically with, uh, uh, the large venue of, of the pool deck and the tiki bar, the refrigeration needed for, um, cooling beer, et cetera. Uh, the other thing that's gonna be impossible is there's no chance there's gonna be any buffering of sound. The tiki bar is facing Summerland Island. If it was at least facing Canada, we'd have a chance. But it's facing Summerland Island, they're gonna have music on there. It's gonna be people talking loudly, et cetera. And that's on a high point of the island. They're, they also talked about, uh, buffering sound off of the, off of the, uh, deck area around the pool. Well, that has that, that's right in the spine of the, of the island, which is the highest point. You can't buffer that, it just doesn't happen. And if you notice on the, on the, uh, map, uh, that the, the, uh, the squiggly purple lines are the electrical feed. The electrical feed is coming off of Summerland Island. I'm sure that nobody has, well, I'd be surprised if anybody has anticipated the load that'll come off of that. Uh, because there, there really hasn't been any load for a long time. And we've had, we've had fires out of that transformer before. I guess those are, are my main concerns. We hope that, uh, uh, that you would take those into account and, um, and, uh, try to help preserve what we've, we've, uh, been enjoying for a hundred and fifty-one years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanford. Um, the next up is a Melissa Mans Knigley.
Hi, um, I own a little channel and I would contest the lawyer and say that we are part of the Summerland Group, as is away from us, from it all, and Sylvan, which are the smaller islands that you're gonna see, um, on your screen to the right. We are very close to Sport. Again, it doesn't look like that on the map, but it is significantly close to our island. We can hear it very well. My question is, I have a twelve-year-old daughter who likes to swim off the back of our island right there. Um, and I'm wondering about how those boats are gonna get through to those twenty-plus docks. Because you have to go through that little channel that's gonna affect, uh, Sylvan away from it all, Summerland and, or Little Child Island and Arcadia. Um, the other way through is also right through between Arcadia and Summerland. So if you have people working, um, it's already a problem where we have people speeding through those gaps. Uh, workpeople who are going to Sport Island, we've had problems with that already. So what is going to be the traffic mitigation or report on this? Because the traffic will be so increased. I remember when, um, Sport Island was used as a rental property. Um, and in my, my youth, they would rent it out to people who would live in the boathouse. Um, a lot of those people were pretty reckless, they would drive their jet skis around. And I remember one set of, uh, a group that literally drove around the Summerland group of islands the whole entire day, um, with a loud boat and were dangerous and reckless. So there is a precedent for that kind of behavior, um, for people who are not invested in keeping this area the nice residential area that it should be and should remain. Definitely something that I'm very opposed to. And I think you need to consider the islands off of Arcadia as part of the Summerland Group because we do consider ourselves part of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, then the next up is Phil Kerr.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to comment as others have that originally this was being done as a residential development, redevelopment, uh, which had a lot of support. Uh, there's been a pivot to a commercial use here. And there's very important, specific technical. Or more on. Um, Michael, you commented that this could be conditioned in various ways. What's been requested is a site plan review to allow resort development, to allow resort use. Resort is defined in the, uh, town code, um, to allow a whole variety of commercial uses, including the words "not limited to", basically allowing unlimited commercial use. So the description by the developers, although is nice, is relatively meaningless. If site plan review is granted, the only way resort is allowed in this zoning is with approval of site plan. And, uh, it is not my understanding, and it's a very important technicality, that that involves a whole lot of conditions as well. That's why I think it's critical that this board recommend that the local board, uh, deny site plan review for resort designation. Instead, I'm encouraging the developer to submit for a conditional use permit or some other approach if it's going to be specifically conditioned. And that's very important to say in this meeting that, um, they can do that, the plan board. If that's not exactly true, is very important distinction. I think it's critical that this board, uh, recommend rejection of site plan review of resort, which allows any use. And suggest to the town that they that take a different approach that allows very specific use conditions if any commercial use is called. Again, this is a residential neighborhood. Bob made the very important point that what this resort is trying to do is co-opt the common area for their benefit and financial benefit. This area, the resort extends on to the island, um, the water use of there. And what that also means is this is not a local issue. If you allow this precedent, county-wide.
Andy?
This precedent here. It goes county-wide and you have, that, 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 but it's on.
Your chat is on the screen, Andy.
Okay, sorry.
Can you still hear me?
Yep, yep.
So this is not a local issue. If you allow unlimited commercial use, which the resort designation with site plan review allows, that precedent county-wide to allow in-residential neighborhoods on these islands across the St. Lawrence River, uh, commercial co-opting, uh, of the surrounding area. Again, I think due to that, it's very important to reject or to recommend rejection of site plan review of resort approval to the town and encourage the town to pursue a different means that would not allow commercial use on this island to significantly limit any specific uses.
Okay, the next up is Eli Smith.
Hey, everyone, can you see me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for, everyone for speaking. I love it that the river runs in all their blood. I just had a few points I wrote down and, my goodness, uh, everyone is so knowledgeable, I'm so impressed. Um, the one thing I thought of, uh, that was brought up was about the people staying on the boats at the dock. Uh, the potential for people to be staying on a boat, um, something that I see working the Miami Boat Show. I live down in Key Largo, but believe me, everything on the walls, um, is something of St. Lawrence. They're probably gonna dump their waste in the water. I would see that as a high potential factor. Um, over the years, I love to snorkel, I love to dive. And something I've witnessed are samples being put out to collect, uh, river samples downriver to see what kind of, um, results they get back. So that's a concern to me. On top of the power lines, you're also running, uh, phone lines to every island in the group. Um, and with anchorage happening, um, we have to, I've actually at least a handful of times, uh, traced our phone line, uh, which protrudes out into the middle of the Summerland Group, um, and spliced it myself, uh, so that we had a landline because we were picking up Canadian service on our cellphones. So that's something of concern. As far as the docks protruding out to, um, the sport used to be parked there, the original side wheeler to the island. Uh, the historic factor of that location where they're putting that long dock, and snorkeling, it's probably a foot and a half deep. I'm guessing all that river rock has been extracted. There's a lot going on underwater as well, uh, which concerns me. Uh, again, you have a lot of knowledgeable people on here. I just wanted to at least throw my two cents out, so there they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, next up is, uh, Wilson Kerr.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I've heard some, uh, some talk from the developers representative about sort of minimizing and, and, and saying that this is residential and that's why there's so many slips. And, and, uh, I'd like to, to also urge this board, to urge the town to deny resort designation. It is nearly unenforceable. There are no, uh, police nearby, there is no one to call. This is across a main shipping channel way out in the middle of the river. In fact, you can't get three hundred feet farther out into the river without actually leaving the United States. This is about as beautiful a remote a place as possible. But regarding this issue of what is their intent, what I'd like to do for the board is read what the developers' website actually says. This is literally I'm reading from the website. And what it says is the following. "Sport Island is a collaborative project to provide a vacation experience like none other in the region with a twenty-four bedroom capacity. Sport Island has something for everyone. Amenities include a sandy beach cove bay for all swim levels, two hundred and fifty feet of dockage, a snack shack, tiki bar, outdoor fire pit, tennis and basketball court, water sport launch point, a picnic island attached by footbridge and additional bridge linking to Lily High. When complete, Sport Island will be the ultimate vacation destination in upstate New York." So I read that from the developers' website for the board's consideration regarding how this is being positioned. This is, this is clearly going to be a major commercial resort. Thank you very much for your consideration. We again urge you to, urge the town to deny resort designation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that li- would like to comment on the project?
Uh, hi, my name is, look, it's my sister, she can go first.
Smart move.
Hi. Hi, thanks so much for letting me speak and, um, I'm here on the island. This is where we eat. And this is what our residential dock looks like. As you can see, it's very small compared to what's proposed. They're, they're gonna do docks right out here that extend. There's a small cut over here where I have small children like Melissa that swim right in here. This is our cove. And I really worry about drunk drivers, so. Thank you, that's all.
So, my sis- thank you, I think my sister and I are kind of thinking a little bit along the same lines. A couple of the things that, that are proposed in the site plan are very hard to see when you're not there in person. The, the extent of the docks that are gonna be, that have been proposed, that would be implemented, would really drastically change the landscape in the area, both from an environmental standpoint and from a residential contextual standpoint. In addition, some of the, the proposed uses on the site are, are a little concerning to the people that live around there because if you were to go there on a average Saturday or Sunday or Bu- because if you were to go there on a average Saturday or Sunday or beautiful day in the summertime, particularly during the peak season, you'd probably find about 100 boats rafted there enjoying the same beauty that has attracted all of us to the environment. And proposing boat rentals and, and water sport docks and having additional boat traffic, servicing, stocking, running karting to and from the island or bringing large number of people out there to events really is kind of setting up an environment that I think frightens a lot of us from a safety on the water standpoint, in addition to some of the nuisances with noise, but also concerns on the unlimited nature of the use in regard to potential transient use as well. So serving customers that aren't just staying there, but having a tiki bar that's accessible by the public and really creating a destination or a commercial operation in the context of a neighborhood. Additionally, when we're looking at the precedent, I think it's very important to everybody up and down the river. We can all draw examples of maybe what was done on the island in the past. On the past, when Mrs. Baker was running the bed and breakfast on, on the island, it was done with the existing dockage that is already there today. It didn't necessitate another 250 or, or 270 feet of, of dockage to serve. Also, I think there should be concerns and maybe, maybe it's not the purview here, but it should be discussed about the long-term viability of these projects. The, the islands are riddled with commercial endeavors in their midst, including Bolt Island that had to be rescued by the state. Singer Castle, which appears to be fledging if you were to go there today to visit it. Ina Island, I don't know if you guys recall, but the boathouse literally disintegrated into the water. And Sport Island was dilapidated and was not successful in the prior use. So I think there's a lot of concern that if this is approved and it goes forward, not only is there no governor over what the next person may do with it, but also what happens when all this is built? This is a six-week season, you know, and if you get a rainy season, it's, it's not even that. So I think there's a lot of concerns for the viability of the project and the thoughtfulness or lack thereof that's been put into the proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the project? Yes, Laura, did you have another comment? You have?
Two. I have my uncle here, Uncle Bobby here.
For those who don't know me, my name is Bob Oster. And I've been coming to the river and the Thousand Islands for 76 years. In the Navy in Vietnam, I never missed a summer. So the river is in my blood. I think if you were to allow sport to go forward with this project, you would ruin all the islands in this group. And the group is about 10 different islands ranging in size from 13 acres for Summerland to smaller islands. Ina is just a single house. Sylvan's a single house. Ernie Mansus is a single, a single house on a small island. You would ruin all those islands if you allowed sport to go forward with this development. It would ruin sport too. So that's my comment. I hope you will not change the nature of the river as I've known it for 76 years.
Okay, is there any other comments? If not, what's going to happen is Andy's going to read the, what is the staff recommendation to the county planning boards for their recommendation back to the local board. And for those of you that may have connected since my introduction earlier, the local board, in this case, the Town of Alexandria Planning Board is the board that has the final decision on this project. So again, the county planning board is, will, will just be making a recommendation back to the local board on this. So, okay, go ahead, Andy.
Okay, so the staff recommends that the county planning board pass a motion of approval with modification. The modifications include primary use of the islands being single-family rental of the houses. Therefore, events would either not be permitted or a limited number be agreed upon. Events should also be limited to a certain number of guests and include quiet hours. Amenities would only be provided for island renters and/or event guests. Any approvals should only occur after the New York State Department of Health, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and any other approvals and procedures are followed to limit neighborhood and environmental impact. Also, the review of the town's local waterfront revitalization program plan pertaining to the project be completed.
Do our board members have any discussion on this recommendation?
Yeah, I, I would go back to docks again and then suggest to the, to the town of Alexandria that they consider it, it's a matter of trying to, to control and limit use to look at docks. Because anything else, as some of the people have said, it's going to be very difficult to, to control use and to enforce it. But with docks, if you, if you limit, that's, that's an easy thing to control. It's an easy thing to, to limit use. So I would, I would urge the, the town to consider that if they have concerns over, over the amount of use and they want to control them.
We, we did comment on that right here in the staff report, the number of boat flips.
I put it in the recommendation.
Right, right. Yep, okay.
Does this recommendation, Andy, does that include all your staff comments then as part of the, the motion?
It, it does. I mean, I don't, they, the comment, the other comments don't carry the weight of the approval with modifications. I think, you know, it, it goes along with it, but the modifications would only carry the weight that are stated, I think. Is that, is that correct, Mike?
Well, yes, all, all of the comments that were in the staff report do go back to the local board in our letter. All of those comments plus the, the detailed recommendation.
So just so I understand, before we vote, with the docks, are you saying they, we should suggest they limit the number or study the number or figure out why they're needed to have that many? Or what, what exactly are you saying about the docks?
What I'm saying is a way to control use. It's a way, it's a way, it's a way, a way to, if their concerns are that there'd be too much use in events and everything else, one way to do that is, is through the, taking a look at the, the docks and limiting, say the, the dockage to, to what they, the kind of use that, that, that's been traditional or what have you. It's, it's a way of dealing with it. Otherwise, trying to, as, as Bob Sly had said, trying to limit use once it's approved and everything else, you're not going to have a zoning officer out there every weekend or at every wedding to, to, to go over this. But, but if you really are concerned about how to do that and not have officers out there and all, there is one way to do that is with docks. So I just say, just as a suggestion for them.
I, I want to piggyback on that as a staff. So when we were talking to Mr. LaSalle, the project engineer about the project, we were hearing that this dock here is proposed. The purpose of that dock is so that small tour boats can deliver people to these larger events. So I agree that the concept of limiting the docks would limit the number of users to a point. But I don't think that's the only way to do it. I mean, dock is installed and if it's deep enough, you, you could have the smaller tour boats bringing in plenty of people, you know, over the course of time. So I, I wouldn't really want to hang our hat on that one way of thinking. So if the board has any other thoughts on it, feel free to bring it up now. Okay?
Well, I'd like to go back to your, put your recommendation there back on the screen, Andy.
Sure.
There, I'd like to eliminate the, the definition there to include events. I think we're far exceeding our jurisdiction to say that you can have one event or you can have two. I think that is, should be eliminated and specifically addressed by the town. If they, they want to have events in their definition of a resort, let them do that. But I don't think we can, you know, we can't say that one event is okay or two events is not okay. So if I'm going to make a recommendation, I'd, I'd eliminate that one sentence. Therefore, events would either not be permitted or limited number agreed upon.
I, I think, David, what we were thinking there was that that is an issue or condition or, you know, whatever you want to call it, that the, the local board should be considering. We weren't putting any kind of number. We're just saying that the local board could either consider not allowing any type of event to occur on the island or in discussions, they could agree upon, oh, you know, a limited number of events as opposed to leaving it wide open and saying that, you know, they can hold events there with, with no limit. They could hold one every night or they could hold one every weekend or, or whatever. We, we were putting that back on the local board to make a specific decision on that other. It wasn't that we were recommending that they only do one or two or three or, you know, we weren't putting a specific number on it. Is that, is that right, Andy?
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, as we've all sort of progressed in our understanding, you know, the, the project involves different uses. I mean, they may align with each other, but the intensity of the event is clearly what is the main concern, at least from what I'm hearing. And if, if the board, if the local board determines they shouldn't be allowed, then that's how they're going to decide. It is allowed with a site plan review in this district. But I think we, we all kind of realize that this is why we have boards, so that they can deliberate on it. Right? So this is the process of deliberating, sort of presented to them that they really should look at. Now, a different way to go would be to deny this and say, well, if you want to propose single families, go ahead. We, we were just sort of addressing it as, as we were understanding and realizing that certain aspects would have less of an impact. So that's, that's how we decided to recommend. But certainly however you guys feel is how you should move forward.
How about the rest of the board? You guys are, got thoughts of what we should be doing?
Is it possible to recommend that obviously their municipality, that single-family use only and events by permit? So that there is, that there has to be an approval per each event or is that not something we can recommend?
Well, the zoning law right now, I didn't find any special event process in it. So normally a use is requested and then it's ruled on. Now, specific permits for each event, that would be a different type of thing. And they do that in some areas, just not aware of it in that town.
Okay.
Because we've run into this in the past with other commercial events that, you know, are, well, will, will definitely require a permit for each one. And I think as, I guess it was Cliff that brought out that, you know, you're not going to have a zoning officer out there every weekend. It's so remote from the center of the town that, you know, once it's either approved or not, that's kind of going to be the way it's going to exist. Well, if.
So I was thinking if we recommended that, that they do require a permit per each event that gives them the ability to have teeth in it if their local law approves.
Does their, what does their zoning say what a, a resort is?
Okay, I'll, I'll read it to you. Give me a second. So a resort, a commercial business that offers a variety of facilities such as, but not limited to, lodging, dining, conventions, marina, camping and recreation.
And there, there's no definition or change because it's an island as opposed to a mainland event?
Right. No, no, there isn't. There, they have site plan, or they have criteria for resorts, but they're, you know, it, it sounds more like a hotel, like what they've had historically in the village.
Yeah.
So it, it doesn't deal with waterfront or docks or anything like that. And that's, that's where I'm, I'm thinking it's not helpful, the criteria they have right now. In this case, they just don't, you know, it, it deals with traffic access and roads and off-street parking, which is vehicles. You could consider access being the boats and the docks similarly, but that's not what it says. And I, I think one, one person said, what about a boat traffic study? And that, that's what I wanted. I, I was thinking, well, how many boats are there? And what are you expecting? What is, the business plan would indicate that all, all for you. But that's not what we're looking at. And, you know, it calls for proper landscaping and open space. And each, each rentable bedroom shall have a bathroom or, or shower and toilet. Again, those are not relevant to this at all. So, you know, I, I think, you know, we've got to react to what's here. And our thought was to consider the separation of, of, you know, single-family is certainly appropriate in our minds. And then events would be more impactful and that's where you want to deliberate on. And as well as the amenities. So again, if you want to modify this, then let me know and then we can go on from there.
Let me, let me raise another question. Do they have a master plan? And what do they recommend as far as the islands as opposed to the mainland?
Right. Hang on a second. With the comprehensive plan, you know, our office provided assistance on that. So at that time, we were, the town was more concerned with jobs and growth and investment and business opportunities that would help the town grow. It was at a time when that was a, a, a slow time, a time in the economy. So to be honest with you, the islands, I'm not sure how much we really focused on the islands. We were more focused on the Route 12 corridor and the Route 26 and employment, also sewer and water near Swan Bay, that whole area. They were trying to get sewer and water again for job growth. But let me find, I'm just looking for the vision, the vision.
How long ago was that plan, Andy?
2013.
They probably should have had a separate, separate district just for the islands.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right. Alexandria, so here's the vision. Alexandria's residents enjoy the area's spectacular scenery, numerous outdoor recreational opportunities abundant, abundance of local open space as well as the rural and waterfront lifestyles that attract seasonal new around residents year after year. Its community service gathering places and service centers for many. The town would like to attract or generate investment to allow current businesses and farms to flourish, establish additional employees and maintain its unique environmental quality of life for current for future residents, property owners and visitors. Then there were. Um, then there were, uh, six goals and a bunch of strategies related to each goal. But there's also policies in the waterfront revitalization plan program that pertain to this. And that's where we were putting it on the local board to consider those policies as well. And part of that is water quality, um, you know, limiting septic issues, you know, the, the usual things that would be included in those. Um, I'm not sure how long you want me to speak on this.
No, I, I just raised that issue and, uh, uh, you know, and it's nice to say that they ought to be looking at it with a, a better fine-tooth comb, but, um, probably won't do that. But, uh, if, uh, if I make this recommendation, does it include all, all your other comments? I mean, I can't, uh, include all of those in the motion that I make.
Yes, it does.
I gotta do it by reference to it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm just not sure what I'll say about the docks.
Well, that, that's one issue of it, but, uh.
Uh, David, before we move forward, I believe that Laura Oster raised her hand.
Okay.
Sorry, that was technical difficulty. Where?
Well, Phil Kerr has his hand raised.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just think you touched on a very important point that I raised before that, um, you know, the, the, it doesn't quite gel to say approval, but with these conditions tied to the resort definition that you read from the zoning. Um, the resort definition allows unlimited use. And so I think it's super important that the board, um, consider that, uh, reality and see reject or deny site plan review for resort use, approve, recommending single-family residential or other uses through another process. That's such a critical component to this. Um, so I just think it's very important, technical difference. You can't have approval and then all these conditions tied to the resort definition as it exists. And so denial to allow that to be clarified in the town code and suggest the town clarify their island resort and all their island definitions first, um, and then allow specific uses, um, that are appropriate for residential neighborhoods on the islands. Thank you.
Bob Sly has his hand raised.
Yeah, you know, lawyers can't help themselves. But, um, what you've all been talking about is what is the essence of this whole problem? And that is that as proposed as a resort with all the uses authorized in a resort zone or for a resort in this neighborhood, in this particular marine residential district, it, it just bespeaks the reason why it is that right now the county needs to recommend that the application for establishment of resort be disapproved. There are too many what-ifs, there are too many, I, I still disagree on what, what uses can be pro- proscribed by a planning board in connection with a site plan. I, I have some basic disagreements on that. I think it's just gonna cause nothing but problems. And once you give something, good luck taking it away. So there's nothing wrong, in my view, with recommending no and asking the developer to come back with a real plan, because right now, they're not giving you one. And they're not giving one to the town. And, uh, you know, the town needs some help, obviously. Uh, there's a reason why there's a referral to the county planning board. Can help a town get a little backbone dealing with somebody coming to town with some money, throwing some money around, we're gonna make your town, you're gonna do real well. But they gotta think about the whole reason, you know, this is a neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood of people who own single-family residences, and they're telling you the problems that they think they're gonna have. And, uh, they just need some help right now. And that's, that's why we would ask that you recommend against approval of the establishment of a resort. And I'll be quiet. Thanks.
A lot of what you say is philosophically correct, Mr. Sly, but I have trouble telling them that they can't do something where they already say it's allowed in that district. That, that part of the zoning. I mean, if they include resort in their definition at this point in time, that, and say that's allowed, kind of have difficulty, uh, telling them that they can't do it.
That's exactly right. If they approve a resort, they can do anything that the thing resort says, but they can disapprove a site.
Hi, Bob, this is, uh, Michael Borsy. Um, I, I guess I want to ask you a question is, you know, when a local municipality is reviewing a project under site plan review, are they allowed to put any, um, conditions on their approval?
In my opinion, they can talk about the site plan itself, okay? You move this dock over here, you know, make sure you do this, that, or the other thing. But to say you can only use it for certain things when the, when the code says, uh, you're approving a resort and a resort allows those things? I'm sorry, I don't think they can impose those conditions. I, I, I know you and I disagree on that, but I do not believe that they have the power to talk about use. Once the town board says those uses are approved. It's my opinion.
Okay.
Well, I, again, Mr. Sly, I, I agree with you in that aspect, but we've got us, I don't know if it's a statute, but a regulation, in their zoning, they say resorts are allowed. And their definition of resort may not be the greatest in the world, but, uh, you know, they're, they're saying that something is allowed in that area because of zoning.
It's a, it's allowed with site plan approval. If you don't approve the site plan, it's not allowed. That's my point.
Yeah.
It's a site plan approved use. If the site plan is not approved, it's not an approved use. There's a lot of work that.
Well. Oh, sorry, sure. Um, I, I guess one, one thing I would put to that, Bob, is my understanding has always been, um, between the two types of reviews, a site plan review and a special use permit or a conditional use permit, whatever term you want to use, um, for, for that review, is that, you know, through the, a zoning process, developing a comprehensive plan and writing your zoning law, that municipalities determine what uses they deem allowable in districts. They can be allowed by, simply by a zoning permit. They can be allowed if they have site plan approval, or they can be allowed by a special use permit. My understanding has always been if a use is listed as a site plan review use, then it has been decided that that use is allowed in that district. But that use may have, um, there, that there, there may be concerns over how that use is put on the property. And that is what the local board would be looking at, is the aspects, the, the physical aspects of how the development is being proposed as opposed to a special use permit where the town has flagged that use, that type of use that requires a special use permit as the use itself is, has a potential to have a negative impact on, you know, the, the area it's being proposed. And that a municipality has a, um, uh, more of a, the ability that they can deny that use because it cannot meet, you know, special use, um, conditions that the town or, you know, municipality may have, uh, set forth for that use.
I, I don't deny anything you're saying, but here we have a neighborhood. And if, and under the general municipal law section, uh, the subdivision L, 239 L, and/or, uh, a town planning board's general authority, if they believe that the site plan as proposed is gonna create a deleterious impact on the community as a whole or on the neighborhood as a whole, they can deny it. And there's some case law in that. There's even some case law on, uh, if it's gonna affect the visual character of the neighborhood. But this, the planning board has that authority to deny a site plan under those circumstances. And that's why I keep talking about the residential character of this neighborhood and how it's going to, if, if a resort is allowed, how that's going to change the entire character of that neighborhood? And why, I'm, why we continue to ask that the county planning board recommend denial of the site plan as submitted for a resort and see where it goes from there.
Mike, I have a question.
Yep.
Um, can, can we, uh, as a board, recommend to the town a moratorium and have them revisit the zoning?
While we, yes, we, we could recommend that. Um, what would, that wouldn't necessarily, um, impact or affect this project because it has been submitted and it, and I'm sure, you know, Bob can speak to this much better, uh, than, than I can, but, um, it, it could come down to how far along they are in the process if they would consider that this application would not be impacted by a mor- moratorium on resorts in the, in the MR district.
Yeah, that, that would be a tough one. I, I actually agree with your analysis where you said that it's just, these things probably, these islands should probably be zoned island, not zoned, you know, marine residential. It should be zoned island, and islands should be treated differently. But that isn't the way the code's written. I mean, I, I get that. Um, that isn't what the town board did. Uh, if it was just zoned island, it'd be a lot easier, but it's not. If they were to deny site plan approval and then adopt a moratorium for island development, that might be something different. First, they'd have to deny site plan approval, and then they could, I believe, adopt a local law imposing a moratorium, because you have to have a beginning date and a stop date, and you have to actually study it, and you have to be real about it, not just try to stop somebody. You have to say, look, we really need to study what's going on. And if they were to study whether there should be a different designation for islands within the town of Alexandria rather than, uh, marine residential, but an island, I think that's a, that's a bona fide real thing that the town board could embark on. My opinion.
Can we maybe add that as a recommendation that if they do turn it down, um, that they consider the moratorium?
Well, what, what I would say is, no, no matter what they do, if they approve it, if they, um, you know, den- deny the application, that, uh, either way, the town should probably look at the marine residential district and have a discussion over the mainland section of that district as opposed to the islands and make a determination through a, you know, through a, you know, proper, you know, um, land use, you know, um, process, you know, to determine what, if, you know, different regulations, you know, should be placed on islands as opposed to, you know, uh, shore, mainland, uh, shoreline districts. I, I think that can be, you know, a, a comment that goes back to the board, you know? Because, again, if they were to approve this, then, okay, that, you know, that, that's a, you know, i- in, in approved project now on the board, but I still think that maybe they, they should look at this issue. Um, and I, I will say that while it wasn't really written in any of our comments or the recommendation, um, what we typically do in, I'll politely say sticky situations like this with our recommendations going back when it's a, you know, controversial, you know, project in a community that the local board lean on their local attorney, you know, their, the town attorney on helping them through this process. Um, because we, we gotta remember too, it, it's, it's not just a land use process for this. There also is the, the seeker process, which is, the, the way it's set up, it's a component of, um, zoning in this issue where the local board has to go through the seeker process and look at all the environmental issues on this project. And basically, at the end, before they can move forward with, yes, we approve this site plan, they have to say that they've determined that there's, you know, no negative environmental impacts or take it through, you know, to a, a, a higher level of environmental review on this. Um, so again, we, and I, I believe after the discussion we've been having, that we will add to our recommendation that the, the, the local, um, planning board, you know, utilize their town attorney to assist them, um, through this process.
Uh, let me ask just a question at this point in time. I see Cliff has left the meeting. Do I still have a quorum?
I believe so.
Art, are you still here?
Art's still here. Randy is still here. Um, Charlene, Dave, Deb.
Okay, all right.
And Lisa.
Okay, good.
Uh, we, we do have, I see that Steve Wood has his hand up.
Yes, thanks, and sorry for the, uh, uh, the technical difficulties before. Uh, I'm Steve Wood. Uh, I own An Island, which is, um, uh, an over-budget residential project, which is the love of Debbie's and our lives, which, uh, provides a great place for friends and family and grandkids to learn to swim and love the river. On my computer, I'm sitting here looking at the marine residential district. And I, and, and I wish that, I, I don't know if it can be put up, uh, in, on, on the screen, the, the description of the, uh, Alex Bay zoning. Um, but it says very clearly, "The purpose of the Marine Residential District is designated to promote residential neighborhoods and certain supporting marine uses which are compatible with the environment and local area." Well, you know, I would, and the permitted uses are single and two-family dwellings, including manufactured or modular homes in camp. Well, you know, success, that's what the area is. That's, that's what we have here. And, and then it, it says with site plan review, all of these other things and, uh, can be approved. But by the fact that it's separate and by the fact that it needs a site plan review, it would also seem, and I agree with Bob Sly, that they can turn it down. Or why have the difference? And, and I would assume that you would agree that a drive-in theater doesn't make any sense at this site. Well, that's allowed per, with a site plan review. So, you know, just like a drive-in theater doesn't make any sense for this location, I would suggest you to, that a resort doesn't make sense. The, the use is completely residential at this point, and in my mind should, should remain so. And I would hope that the board would follow the guidance of the neighbors and, uh, and not approve, uh, this as a resort. Thank you.
I also see that Melissa has her hand up again.
Hi, yes, I just wanted to also comment that if you open this up to a resort status and you allow this zoning, that you can basically, um, it might actually hurt your tourism. So then I can maybe zone to have a restaurant on my island and not use it as residential. And maybe the guy next to me will have, uh, his tiki bar open. And, you know, it's going to really ruin what people come here for, and that is what supports your jobs. People don't come here to watch a hundred drunk people at a tiki bar. They come here for the islands and the residential buildings. And so, I mean, I would consider that if you open this up to a resort status, that you're allowing carte blanche, there are other things to happen with other people who have these great big ideas and want to change the face of everything in the neighborhood. So just consider that as well. And the border, what about Border Patrol? How is that gonna work? I can jump off sport and swim to Canada. So.
I don't know anything that we have, any sort of, you know, international treaty that, uh, we can. uh we can rely on as far as relations with Canada or that type of thing. So, I guess that's up to the Border Patrol itself. But again, I I raised the issue that if their zoning right now says that resorts are allowed in it, um, either they change their zoning some way or uh eliminate that definition, but uh. But anyway, okay. Mike, are we?
Hi, this is Randy.
Hello, go ahead.
Hello.
Yes, Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, a lot of people had great points. Um, my only consideration, well, there's a few of them, but my main one is it's a sweeping change from the sounds of things. Um, I don't think there was one neighbor that was for it from the sounds of it. Um, and when you're dealing with something like that, I think somebody needs to go back and do their homework a little bit more. Um, because once it's done, it's over. And and I know what it's like to go to a place to relax and not be able to relax because of what's going on around you. Um, so I can't support that, what we have written up right now. I think somebody needs to go back and do some more homework before I can support it. That's just my two cents.
Who's that guy?
One of the board members.
Oh, Jefferson County still?
Well, we are, um, there there is a a requirement under the two thirty-nine M that the county planning department or sorry, the county planning board has thirty days once there's been a referral from the project. So, what our board needs to do today is, you know, either act on the recommendation that the staff put forward or the board members will have to, um, you know, but come up with another uh recommendation that they want to put forward and can be approved to send to um the local planning board. Otherwise, if we don't, we either have to hold a special meeting or uh the thirty days will run out and then there there's no weight behind any type of um recommendation because it would just be um some staff, general staff comments that would go back for te- you know, technical support um reasons. It's it's gonna be up to the county planning board members uh what you would like to do.
I'm for that personally. Um, but regardless, even if we if we were the the um, the county board were to deny it, um, and not go with the recommendations, the the town could still do what they felt proper for them. I mean, there is home rule, correct?
But it would take a super majority to overrule, to override our rec- that recommendation that you make.
Yeah.
Then that's what they need to do then, because it it sounds to me like the only people that are for it are the people that are doing it. Right?
A super majority of their planning board members.
Understood, understood. But that's that's the home rule issue. Um, I I I just think there's such a such a disapproval by the neighbors that they need to look at what they're doing. Maybe the what their zoning calls for isn't really applicable here. That's my concern. Oh, I wanna mute myself again.
Well, go ahead and make the motion, Randy.
I'll make that a motion that we uh as the county board deny the request as stated and uh will look at it in the future.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. Is there any comments, additional comments? If not, then uh.
Well, oh, uh, hold on, um, David, I just wanna be be clear on this. Um, the the recommend recommendation that is put forward is that the county planning board is recommending disapproval of the project um as referred by the local board. Is that, Randy, is that what your um motion is?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, now you made, just for clarification, um, Randy, you did say that, you know, w- we would see it again. Well, that that all depends on, you know, uh, on the the local board. I mean, like, like it has been stated, they can, they can um do a super, they can do a super majority, majority plus one, and they can override our our disapproval and they can go ahead and, you know, a- approve the project. Um, th- they could disapprove it um a- also, uh, you know, and and go along with it. It's just, I I just don't want our board members to think automatically that if we disapprove it, we're we're going to see it again. It depends on what could be proposed in the in the in the future for the project if it would require um county planning board to review it or not.
I I agree with you completely, and I'm very comfortable with the fact that if they do come through with a super majority, um, the people have spoken. Um, and if it comes back to us, maybe it'll come back in a more of a of a form that everyone can see is more palatable for everyone. Right now, I I don't see that. So, um, I'm just trying to do what I feel is right. Um, so, yeah, let the let the let the chips fall where they may.
Okay, I guess what I would ask um with this vote, because it is difficult being a virtual voting, um, that I'm going to go through, and well, once, once um David uh puts forth um this motion for a vote, I'm gonna um go through the list of names that I have that were at least originally uh in on the uh the the meeting. I'm not sure exactly who who had left. Um, and I'm going to call a name out and ask you to um vote yea or nay on the recom- on the motion to recommend disapproval on the the Sport Island project.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So are are we ready to vote, David?
Yep, poll the board.
Okay, um, and this is just the the list that I have down here. Um, Deb McAtee.
You're you're muted.
I'm sorry, I.
So you, uh, sorry, I I didn't hear that.
I I I'm voting in favor of what is being recommended, that we recommend to the town that it is declined.
Okay. Um, next on the list, John Storms. Is John still on? Okay, let me just check here. Yep, it looks like John. Okay, um, David Prosser.
No.
Randy.
Aye.
Charlene. Charlene. Okay, she might have stepped away. We'll move on. Um, Cliff.
He's left also.
Cliff's left also. Okay, Art Baderman. Uh, let me check here. Uh, Art, you're muted.
He's on a phone, Mike, so.
Yep, yeah, his his, there he is.
Yep, I'm uh voting in favor of the motion.
Okay. Lisa.
Yes.
Okay, I wanna go back to Charlene. Are you, she's not muted, but she may have stepped away.
She's there.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, give a thumbs up if you approve.
Oh, there, Char- Charlene, did, did you hear our motion? Oh, you're, I can't hear you. I'm not, are are you, okay?
If she can hear us, we must, she must be able to hear us.
Charlene, give a thumbs up. With your thumb.
Our sixth on mute.
Well, she's nodding yes.
All right, we'll have to take that as an affirmative.
She's, I believe she is nodding yes, so she is also in support of the motion. But um, are there any other county planning board members on the line that I did not call?
George wasn't here. Uh, Dwight wasn't here. So.
What's the count?
And it appears that John left and Cliff left. Um, so that leaves us with just six people left. Um, that's, and I'm gonna say this out loud so everyone's hearing. I have uh Deb McAtee, Dave Prosser, Randy, Charlene, Art, and Lisa. So that does give us a quorum, but I have uh five yeses for the motion and I have one no for the motion. I believe because of um, we're an eleven-member board, that we need six votes, um, one way or the other to be able to advance this. And I'm, I I I'm gonna reach out to Bob Sly if he agrees with that, that we need six yeses to move the mo- motion forward.
Yes, you need the majority of the entire board.
Yes, okay. I just wanted that to confirm not just for me, but for e- everyone that is uh still hanging on um for the call here. Um.
Any way we can call the, call these people?
Um, I I.
Well.
I don't believe that that would be, um, I I I know that we can't call them on the phone, I guess, and ask them to vote. Um. Now, if if they were to come back into the meeting, but they were part of the discussions that have occurred, so I would be, I would be leery of bringing one of the other members uh back in to vote on this and not have that be a legal issue moving forward with this.
I think that only the two that uh heard all of the discussion and comments should be allowed to vote.
All right, well, if it means the board can't take any action, then can I change my vote?
I I believe as the saying goes, it's your prerogative.
Well, if if it means, uh, you know, us us either having a a recommendation or no recommendation at all, I'll have to change my vote then and agree to the recommendation.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, so with with David.
Right?
Yes, yeah.
Right, this would be moving forward um on a motion to um recommend disapproval to the local board um for this project. We have uh six yeses, um, which is a quorum of the our full board. Um, so, um, that is what we will send back to the local board for their consideration. Um, now for our board members, thank you for staying this long. Um, we 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 do have two intergovernmentals um that we we need to handle before we adjourn the meeting.
But Mike.
So, and so.
Mike? When you you send that back, you gotta tell them that they need a super majority to overrule it.
Oh, yes, yeah, that that's part of our standard um letter to go back for any type of um recommendation other than the project of local concern.
Okay.
So, Andy, you wanna bring up your, yep, and go for the uh intergovernmentals?
Uh, yes. Okay, so, the last two things here are the two funding requests by um communities. The first one is proposed by the town of Philadelphia. They wanna extend their water line to um serve additional seventy-three residences. Uh, let me just get my pointer here. Along uh Route eleven and um, it's hard to read, but they're extending water service to this area of the town. Um, so they're serving those homes, businesses, farmland and vacant lots. The proposed district will extend about twenty-six thousand five hundred feet from the village down uh along uh Irish Avenue and connect to to a eight-inch water line. I'm sorry, at the water line that's there now is that Irish Avenue, but it'll connect in and add capacity for this area in the red line. Okay. I don't have a budget for the project, so that's why I didn't send out a staff report with it, but that's, you you've heard the description. That's all I have right now. Should I just keep going?
Yeah, isn't there one more?
Yes, there's one more. So the, I'm sorry, here's the other drawing they submitted. Just shows you the other full parcels that'll be affected. Um, so also, the village of Tharissa is proposing funding, uh, oh, I'm sorry, from the Rural Utility Service. The other one was USDA Rural Development. Um, so Tharissa wants to upgrade and improve their municipal wastewater treatment system. And um, this is the collection system in green and the red are the wastewater treatment plant site. Um, there's three of them, I guess. I didn't know that. And they've got some funding, a million dollars from another source, but this this source there, they wanna request more funds. Again, I don't have a budget. But um, so those are the two projects we we uh reviewed this month.
Okay. Well, it's always been our policy to uh have the planning department send a letter of recommendation uh for those approvals, and I'll make that motion.
Art Baderman, second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, uh, the department will send letters of recommendation on those two.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, we have nothing else before the board.
Okay, no, no training or any meetings or anything coming up?
Uh, while we we are um talking with Department of State about coming up in September to do an evening training, um, but that hasn't been um set in stone yet.
Okay. All right. Lisa.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, this is almost a three-hour meeting. I think it's a record for for.
No, come on, make your motion. Charlene, second. Charlene, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
See everybody.